In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey adequate notice of this meeting in the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided October 14th, 2011 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. This, we're here early for the purpose of going into our executive session, so I will read the motion whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of laws of 1975 provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset in the State of New Jersey as follows: The following matters to be discussed are an employee discipline matter and a student disciplinary matters related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying. The matters discussed in the executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'll take a motion to that effect.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? An abstentions? All right, we're in executive session. We are back out in public. Mr. Mahmood, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kint? Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Padgett?
Here. All right, we are done with our executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed and abstentions? So we are closing our pre-meeting and then we're moving on to our regular scheduled public meeting. So in accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey adequate notice of this meeting in the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on October 14th, 2011 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier News. All right, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not that I expect things to have changed a lot, but can we have a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Padgett?
Here. All right, we have our correspondents listed and we're going to move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce our principal of our middle school to begin a discussion that we'd like to have with the board concerning a pilot that is on your agenda this evening, A8, that's entitled "Motion to Approve the Middle School Touchscreen Mobile Device Implementation Plan." As you may recall, at the high school level, we approved at our last meeting a pilot to have iPads in two Algebra I classes. This is a slightly different type of pilot that was presented for the education committee's review and a little bit later in the evening, Mrs. Haas will report out on that. But before we do, we prepared a presentation will be available for questions from the board. And to begin that, we have Mr. Trabowski who's here tonight and will introduce the people who he's brought with him.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff, and thank you, members of the Board of Education, for having us here this evening to talk with you briefly about something we're very excited about for the middle school and I think for the high school and really for children in our district. And frankly, what seems to be happening around the country, which are school districts looking to a particular technology, this touchscreen tablet PC technology in schools, I think we are seeing a day where a particular technology has finally adapted itself well to a classroom setting, to students at this level, 13, 14-year-olds, teenagers, the life that they live nowadays, and in particular, a powerful technology that opens up a world of resources at their fingertips, literally, and puts it in the hands of the classroom, but also extends it beyond the classroom. Because when they walk out those doors, this device can go with them, it is with them already. Walking in here this evening, we passed a youngster who couldn't have been more out of elementary school, and there she was with her iPad going through what looked like a quasi-educational game that she was playing on the way in. And we're seeing that now at the middle school level, too, that students have electronic devices, whether it's an iPhone or an Android device, so they have this touchscreen technology that accesses the Internet and a variety of resources and apps on their person all the time. The iPad or the Android similar tablet PCs, larger screen, but battery life that can last through a school day and put in their hands not only a world of Internet resources, video, excuse me, educational apps that are rich with content, interactive design that can enhance the instruction that teachers want to deliver to their students in the classroom and then beyond the classroom as well. What we would like to do is pilot this technology within one classroom or two, under the direction of Deborah Perowski, who will speak with you in just a moment, my math content specialist at the Hillsborough Middle School, a great environment where we can observe how students use this technology within the classroom and how we as a school should be developing our policies and practices that help to manage and support and truly capitalize on this technology that kids are already starting to use. And we can use it in very positive and productive ways, not only in the area of mathematics, as I think we'll show you this evening, but frankly, I anticipate really across the curriculum, science, social studies, literacy, just about everywhere throughout the school day, that a student can carry with them a device that's not much bigger than this pad of paper that fits neatly on their desk, that taps into not only, as I mentioned, Internet and video and app resources, but even the teachers' Moodle pages and assignment pages that they carry online, a place where they can easily take notes and it can sit comfortably alongside the traditional pad of paper, pen, notebook, and other resources that they would then use in the classroom at their desk and not take the place of any of the great things that go on the classroom, but truly enrich and enhance it. And so rather than me trying to describe that to you, I wanted to have Deborah share with you a brief video, but also talk with you and then be able to answer questions about what she has already tested the waters with, with just her own iPad in her Algebra class. So without much further, let me please introduce and welcome Deborah Perowski, the math content specialist from Hillsborough Middle School. Deborah?
Good evening. I, as Dr. Trabowski said, I'm the math specialist over at the Hillsborough Middle School. I've been a math teacher in Hillsborough since 1993. I've been teaching math for 19 years, and I don't think I've ever shied away from trying something new and innovative in the classroom, whether it's been a new program when we went to Connected Math a few years ago, whether it's embracing something like Study Island, which is an Internet resource. I'm always looking for something new and exciting to do to make what we do even better. I don't think you should ever sit back and think, this is the best we can do. There's always something more out there. They're developing something new, and I think we need to reach out and find out what's out there, bring it into the classroom. So I've been thrilled to be a part of this pilot of a pilot, I don't know if it's a pre-pilot program. I have an iPad, what we've been using so far, and one in my classroom, and we've been using it as I teach Algebra I to seventh graders. The first time we really got to use it, we were evaluating algebraic expressions, solving, I'm sorry, putting values of variables in and combining like terms. And we have a little movie we put together, because it's one thing for me to stand here and tell you how much fun it is to use this, it's another thing for you to get this, see the students actually using and engaging in the learning. Now, what you're going to see is not what we would hope to actually be in the classroom someday, because what we're looking at is having one in front of each student, so that each student's doing the work and doing their own investigations. What you're going to see is students coming to the board, and, I'm sorry, they're going to come to my desk. And my, the iPad is connected to the dongle, which is then connected to the board, so everybody else in the class can see what the one student is doing up at the board. So you're going to get to see actually two students helping each other out, one student trying to investigate a problem, and just a little aside to how it starts. When I first bought the iPad out in class, of course, the first question, well, the first question is, do you play Angry Birds? The second question is, do you play Words with Friends? And I said, I do, and they said, oh, can I start a game with you? One student in particular said, sure, go ahead. So I've been playing Words with Friends back and forth with Eric for a little while, and that night, the day that I did this in class, I went home that night, and it was his turn in Words with Friends, and he left me this message, and if you've known me at all, after 19 years here in the district, you know this is the stuff I live for and this is the stuff I love. So without any further ado, I think Dr. Schiff's going to go ahead and put the video on.
I'm now on the touch app. My brain is so full right now. You know that Algebra touch app you've got, you showed us yesterday?
Yep.
I actually really thought that was really cool, so I got it on my iPod, and this is just one of the problems. So you bring the seven over here, because it was divided by seven.
Okay.
You multiply those.
Right.
And you multiply seven times five.
Right.
And you bring it over here and change it to a negative.
Okay.
And add, so the math is fifty-six.
Okay.
Then we split those apart.
Okay.
So it's one thirty-three times x.
Right.
Then bring that over here, so it's fifty-six over one thirty-three, then you just factorize. I'll try to figure that one out first.
Seven over eighteen.
And then seven times eight.
Okay.
Cross out the sevens, and it's eight over nineteen.
And I didn't teach you any of this yesterday, so how did you figure all this out?
All these.
So you read through all of them last night?
Yeah.
And learned how to do it all? So that was solving a two-step equation with division, and you just started to yourself on the app?
Yeah. Move the terms around, so you can try by adding.
Okay, let's see, three and six are like terms, and I get nine, and three x and seven x are also like terms. Now try to add this. Even Shane can tell you that it doesn't work. That's cool.
I was wondering if you could add six x squared and two exponent squared, because I need to add two like exponents together, but I didn't know if you could add those together. So I'm going to use this to see if it'll work. How do you get the thing back? So you can't, so they're like terms. Not like terms, but if you were stuck and you didn't really get it, you can press the explain button, and it would show you that they're added together, they're called terms, and those are the terms. But like, you can add, you can only add the terms that are alike, and that one's x, so one has a variable and one doesn't, so they're not really like, so it shows you how you can do that. But you can't simplify it because they're not like terms.
Okay, so in the book, there's a problem I had trouble with, so I decided to use this app to help me, and it says choose a starting number, so I'll just do three. Okay. I need, okay, start with three, multiply by three, subtract four, and then put another bracket, multiply by two, add twenty, and then divide by six, and then subtract your starting number. And now I can simplify it by just going like this, and that turns to five times two, plus twenty, and the whole thing equals two. All right, did it, Katie? Oh, you did it already! I wasn't even watching! Hit it! Repeat, hit repeat. Okay, Katie, well, tell us before you, what did you just do, Katie?
Um, I added like terms.
Okay, and now what are you going to do?
Add the five and thirteen.
Why?
Because they're like terms.
Good, and what do you call numbers like five and thirteen?
If you start to make a mistake, then you, then it actually stops you and sort of tells you, oh, you made a mistake, you can't do this, so you, so you try to figure out a way that you can actually get the right answer and actually understand what you're doing in the process.
We're going to set up the iPad just so that you can see some of the apps that the students were actually using. I think it was a little easier to hear in a smaller room than it was here, to hear in this big room. So I'm just going to show you a couple of the things that the students do, and in a minute, you should see it up on the screen. There it is. So I just want to give you a general impression of this, again, this is the iPad, and you know, we're looking at something this or something compatible to this, if it's an Android tablet, but it'd be the same idea. And you can see on it, you know, I've had this since the summer, I have a lot of things downloaded onto it, just under some of the general math things I wanted to point out, if you can see it up there. I have two children in the district myself. My son is in first grade, and this topic game is an everyday math game. There was a weekend that Everyday Math offered all of their apps for free, and you could go on and you can download them. Nope, that's, over here, under just some other math things, there's some games, this pre-algebra game that they can play. This is a little mirror, and I can draw on it, and this, I do in one of my other classes, which is reflections in a kaleidoscope design. So you see, there's lots of different things you can do. More math apps here, some of these are specific to proportions, or they're specific to just factoring something in the quadratic form, others are much more general. These Wolfram, there's a Wolfram Pre-Algebra on this, I also own the Algebra one, that's a lot of videos. Sometimes these kids are absent, they go to band, they just didn't quite get what you were talking about in class that day, and these videos are then available for, they can go home and they can watch them. The Khan Academy also has an Algebra and a Pre-Algebra, and the list of topics is, it's enormous. I mean, there's 22, and that's just in the Pre-Algebra, and they can go through and find a topic that they need. Here in Algebra, some of my favorite ones that we've used, and I find that you really actually have to be in the classroom with the kids to really get a sense of how useful the app is. This is the first one, the Algebra Touch, which we've really enjoyed. When we first did combining like terms, and I talked to the students about what here can you add together, and you can add the one and fifteen, but they're not next to each other, so you just move it over, and they just loved that. They watched, that's the communicative property, live and in action. Then when you touch the little plus sign, if they're like terms, they go together. Two y and five y are like terms, if you saw the one with Katie, she kept touching it before, I wanted them to like, talk their thinking through with me, she was just so excited, she would come up and touch them. I had another kid come up, and he stood there, and he said, I've never touched one of these before, but I can't wait to try it. It almost didn't matter what the problem was, he was so excited to come up and give it a shot. We add them together, my students actually love this, when they're not like terms and you press them, the numbers wiggle a little bit, like they're saying, no, no, no. And then this was the one, also, there's an explain, and it goes to a different problem. It's not that it's going to walk you through that problem, it's that it's going to go back and give you another example. I'm not looking for anything to do the thinking for my students, I want them to think, I'm not looking for anything to do the teaching for me. This is my passion, this is what I love. I'm looking for something that gets them excited to think about what else could happen, what else might be out there, and I just think this technology is great for that. Another app, and we use this today in class, is this Mathination. And this is actually the problem we did today in class, so if they're watching this ever on Channel 14, they should recognize this. We were doing the distributive property, and they understood this first one pretty easily, distribute the four. Then the question came to what happens when you're distributing this minus three, and what happens to these subsequent numbers, and they were like, oh, well, it's minus three x plus six. And I said, oh, is it really? And I can explain all of this to them standing in front of the room, but then when they come up and they do it, and then it's a minus six, and we get to talk about why, then when they go home and they're doing their homework, if they weren't quite sure how that happened, they could plug this in again. Rather than practicing it wrong and thinking that they're doing it right, they can go in and they can make up their own problem, they can check it. And again, we can move these around, we can combine, you actually take your fingers and squeeze them together, move those around, take your fingers and squeeze them together. So it's more than just a calculator also, although there's fantastic calculator apps, there's fantastic graphing calculator apps, but it requires them to do a little more than just plug the number in, hit a button, and say, oh, the answer must be four. So those are some of the highlights of some of the fun that we've been having with it, in my classroom at least. So that's my part.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perowski. We can, we can sense your passion with it, and we can sense your kids' passion with it. At this time, we'd like to open it up for any comments from the board, questions?
So if you didn't, so if you didn't have the iPad, then, and you had a computer at home, you would use your mouse to move the like terms near each other?
I've personally never seen something like this that you would do on the computer and not on an app, in terms of moving it around like that. I've never seen that be done. I've seen practice problems, you can go on to almost any, you know, a lot of education websites and get practice problems and put your answer in and see if it's right or wrong. I have never seen something like that, where you actually do, physically do the moving of the terms yourself. I've never seen that, 19 years, so.
There's also something to be said about the difference between a one-to-one environment and a one-to-one teacher environment, and then the kids coming up and doing different work. If we just look at the dais, and almost all of us are currently, right now, in a one-to-one environment, that it makes us more effective and more efficient, even Mrs. Haas, who's right here, doing her thing with it. There is something that's qualitatively different, and Mr. Trabowski and the rest of the leadership and team and I have been talking about the environment and how the educational environment begins to change, transform, so to speak, when you're in a one-to-one environment, when the children have that access in the palm of their hands, and maybe Mr. Trabowski can expand upon that.
Yeah, I think that's the, that's the key, is that it's a one-to-one with the students, not only in the classroom, but as Deborah was describing, when they're at home, that this experience they have in the classroom that's supported by the teacher with direct instruction and practice and guided instruction in the classroom, when they then go home, they've got all those resources at their fingertips once again, and it's giving them feedback, where the teacher is not there to give them feedback. The teacher now is sort of the tutorials, and the resources are there to give them that immediate feedback. And as you saw with one of the students, to extend beyond that, that students quickly had their own questions that they wanted to pursue and see what if, and kind of move forward as fast or at their own particular pace. If their pace was, I need to go back and review, or my pace is, I'd like to see what else this can do and go to the next level. So it just opens up whole new avenues for what we really want our students to be doing, which is learning at their pace and exploring and being excited about the subject as well, and being able to do that from home as much as in the classroom.
I just wanted to say that I've been able to observe firsthand at home, the sort of excitement that, it's the extension, it's the, I'm excited about this subject, so I'm going to download information, and, oh, there's more information, and instead of, you know, it being a very sort of dry subject, it becomes, you know, anything at your fingertips, I feel like learning tonight, I, you know, you go through half the class, you feel like it, but, you know, that sort of excitement is very much at their fingertips.
I'd like to ask a pragmatic question. So, for example, have the kids forgotten to bring in the iPad, or have they?
We, we don't, we only have mine so far. My students, you know, they're aware of this is happening, because they were in the classroom with the little video camera, videotaping them, and they've talked about questions like this as well, you know, what if they're not, do you have 30 plugs to charge them in? And I told them, it's more going to be about a mind shift about what you expected to bring with class to you that day. I have 24 students in the room, somebody's going to forget a pencil, I'm going to have an extra pencil, somebody's not going to have their book, they're going to share a book, and we're going to make do. You know, I said to them, how many of you have a fully charged cellphone on your race rate now? And all their hands went up. I'm like, you don't come to school without your fully charged cellphone, don't come to school, and if you did, we'd plug it in for you. It needs to just become that to them, this is what they're going to bring to school, and this is what we're going to use to learn that day. And as their teacher, I have to be ready to, you know, who forgets what, who forgot their lunch money, that, those things happen, but I've never not been able to teach my class, because nobody in the class has remembered to bring their book. You know, it's more of a one-to-one, you know, basis like that, and then, you know, as the teacher, that'd be my responsibility then to figure out how we're going to work with that. But we don't have them yet, so I haven't experienced that yet, but that's sort of the explanation I've been giving my own students.
Dr. Rosenberg?
Just two comments about this. First of all, the, if you, if you look at, I've taken a look at the industry a little bit, educational software developers are not developing for computers anymore, they're developing, the first products are coming out for tablets. It's fundamentally different. People sometimes think the tablet is just a small computer, and technically it is, but in terms of how it's used, it really isn't. It's more like a personal device. The other, so, so if you want to get the latest and most powerful and most innovative software, they're being built for tablets. The other thing I think that makes this different is, is in a sense, the mobility. It isn't stationary, even though laptops are not stationary, a lot of times the batteries are not strong enough, they don't plug in. These are truly mobile, so it goes from the child's home to the, to one class, to another class eventually, then to the friend's house to study, and all over the place, and it just goes with them. It will be as much a part of them as, as you say, the cellphone, which is not the same thing as, as a laptop. A laptop is, is not really a part of someone. This may seem a little esoteric, but I think it's, I think it's important to understand that this becomes a very personal device for a student who is very, very, becomes very, very comfortable with, with using it. So I think if we are going to do a one-to-one, there is only one technology to, to do it on, and that is a tablet technology, that is simply where everything is going.
Any else from the board? Mrs. Haas?
Yeah, I would just like to thank Mrs. Perowski and Dr. Trabowski for coming in here. We had had a discussion about this at our first education committee meeting two months ago, and there were some, a lot of questions among board members, and frankly, the entire tone of the discussion came as a result of Deborah's PowerPoint video, whatever. And I thank you for reteaching me all the algebra that I forgot from eighth grade, but whatever. But it's just very exciting when you actually see the kids using it. And just like Dr. Trabowski, we walked in together, and as we're walking in, there was like a third grader who was like walking through the halls, playing with her iPad that she owned, and one of the other kids who was in sixth grade said, oh, everybody in my class has their own iPad. So we're very happy to hear that, and, you know, hopefully, they'll be able to utilize these devices for a variety of programs. But these applications are wonderful, and you have the flexibility, we don't have to buy textbooks necessarily, that are static for the five to 10 years we keep them, you have new stuff coming on board all the time, and that gives you the flexibility to teach things as well as it could be taught. And we're always talking about differentiation and the expectation that teachers can deal with, you know, 25 to 30 kids in a class and deal with everybody's personal needs, not that these would ever replace a teacher, but they sure help, and they give a teacher 20 extra hands in the classroom. So I am very happy to support that as head of the education committee and hope the board will affirm that tonight, so we could get this on the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. I think also, it may, may be a good opportunity to share with the public at this point, some of the Fuse as well.
Sure.
In this particular pilot, we are not supplanting the Algebra I text, which is the text that, that the Fuse is based upon, but it will be used to supplant the Algebra I material.
Yes, we, there's a different textbook for Algebra I at the middle school than the high school. We believe very strongly in our approach to mathematics at the middle school, it's very in tune with what the Connected Math program is, and that's the algebra book that we, that we chose, a very inquiry-based program, helping the students discover the algebra on its own and make sense of it on their own. So that part, we're going to remain true to, I believe, that very much to be the proper way to teach, the best way, to teach middle schoolers how to do algebra. But when it comes to practicing, how to solve a quadratic formula, you can pull your problems from anywhere. So the Fuse app is great, is a great addition to what we're already going to do. They have, if you go to these view in motion, and we've used this in class as well, they just kind of do step by step. Well, how am I going to multiply 15 by 103? Well, the first step is, I'm going to rewrite 100 as 100 plus 3. And if I'm doing it in class, and a kid can go all the way through, they can go all the way through, if somebody needs to say, oh, wait, just stop right there, let me understand that step, I can go on to the next step, and not only do you have the problem, you have the information as well. So this is the math in motion that you can do, they have, oh, I turned it off, I'm going to hit done, they have videos. I'm not above saying that sometimes the kid needs to hear it in a different way than what I'm saying, I'm confident enough as myself and a teacher to understand that maybe my word wasn't the right word to say to you, so how else can I say this to you? And they have great videos here, I don't, I think I have to need to move them. I think I have to need to move them.
Really great thing to do when you're looking at a multiplication question is to wonder, can I write it in an easier way?
So this, these videos, and I wish I could stop this, just pause the screen. What it has on it also is it, it's multisensory to them, where examples are going to show up in this box over here, definitions are going to show up in this box down here, he's going to be speaking up here. If I'm going to be absent, I can leave this for them to look at on their own. Just, it's another great resource to have at my fingertips. There's also try these problems, and we can do them together, and they can come right up. And I've picked one that I have to look at real quickly. And let's say I think it's D, and then they can check their answer, and it's try again, and it actually tells you what to do, how to break it down further. So that's some of the ways that we can access the Fuse app, which is already being used at the high school, in a way to just help what we're already doing and make it even better, and to have just another resource for just a couple additional questions, especially for the students that just might need one or two more problems. Judy was saying about the differentiated instruction. When I asked the students what they thought of it and what they liked about it, one of them said, you know, sometimes you just have like one quick little question and you're across the room helping somebody else. So I either can sit and wait for you to come, or I could just like look it up real quick and move on myself. But if I had a real question, I could wait and talk to you. But if it was just something little, I could do it and move on. And I just thought that was fantastic, just, again, not to take my place in the classroom, I'm not looking at, but, you know, just something to help them help themselves to go further in their own understanding.
I just have a question. Excuse me.
Mrs. Bogatovsky?
Hi. So you'll still be able to see their work while doing this? Like, so you'll be able to know that they know like step-by-step by step to get to the solution?
Yes, yeah. As far as any of these apps are concerned right now, they wouldn't actually turn in any assignments to me via the tablet. I have not gotten that, any apps that have me do that yet. But what they can do at home after they do their homework is they can check it on the app and see if it's right. I mean, often answers are in the back of the textbook. And I would say to them, the same thing I would say to you, I'm not going to let you use the tablet or the iPad to check all your test answers before you hand it in. You know, these are algebra students, they understand that, that they were doing themselves no service by doing all their answers on the iPad and handing that in. That's not going to help them, and I'll make that clear to them. But the one problem that Evelyn was doing, the first problem then had all these subsequent problems. She just wasn't real confident that the first answer was two, and she's like, I don't want to do all these other problems if that two is wrong. And we were actually videotaping everything else, and she said to me, can I just use it real quick to check my problem? I said, well, yeah, that's fantastic. And that's what we did. So it's a device really to help them help themselves. And the other students that created the question, we had done that you can't combine 6x squared and an x because they weren't like terms. And we were just kind of moving on from that, and the hand went up and they said, but could you combine 2x squared terms? I said, gee, I don't know, come up to the iPad and let's find out. You know, I have the ability, of course, to explain it to them, but how nice that they came up with that question themselves. And they could come up, they could make up their own problem and discover that for themselves. And then who knows what they're going to do then when they're home? You saw in the beginning clip when Eric downloaded, Algebra Touch is also an iPod app. And he downloaded on his iPod Touch and showed me the next day how to solve a very complicated algebraic equation that I have not taught him yet. And I said, how did you learn that? He said, I did all these little lessons across the bottom. You know, it's a student ready to take that leap, and on his own, he was able to take that leap.
So you don't think they're going to have a problem going from paper, I mean, from paper and pencil to the iPad and vice versa?
No, they'll love it.
When it comes to like test time?
No, I know, they're still going to be, they're still going to be doing their homework on pencil and paper. We're still going to be doing workout in pencil and paper. Yeah, no, so I'm not anticipating that being a problem. And it's something for me to be mindful of every single day when we're using them in class, that I'm not just on the iPad for two weeks and I whip it away from them and hand them a pencil and piece of paper. That wouldn't be fair to them. So, you know, that's a good point then for me to remember as I'm working through all of this. But again, this is not, right now, intended to be the way that they're going to hand their homework in to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay.
All right, seeing no further questions from the board, there might be more superintendent report, but we're going to open it up to the public if the public has any questions at this time about this pilot program. All right, seeing none, Dr. Schiff.
I would just like to thank so much Dr. Trabowski and Deborah Perowski for all of their fine work in putting this presentation together tonight. Thank you so much.
And thank your students.
That's all for my superintendent's report this evening.
All right. I think we're ready to move on to the board committee reports. Would our HR committee chair like to start up? Mr. Pulsifer?
Why not? I'll pardon for my voice before we get started here. I am coming down with a cold, so if I sneeze, I am going to turn away for a second. We met on Thursday. We started out by recapping the minutes and action items from our previous meeting. One issue that did come up is, at our previous meeting, we had made a recommendation to the board that if we did not continue with the current committee structure, that we were advocating that the current HR committee continue it as an ad hoc negotiations committee for continuity. We just, as part of discussion, we want to make it clear that we were not trying to supersede the president's authority for committee assignments. This was just a recommendation as to what we thought would be appropriate for the continuation of any negotiations activities. We then moved on to discussing the superintendent's goals, specifically goal number two, which had to do with formative assessments in the PLC groups. That, the, part of the discussion was regarding the quantity of assessments that would be required as part of defining the goal. Dr. Schiff is currently working with the various PLC groups on that, and we did not want to set that goal in place with an actual number until he could continue, complete working with those groups to help work with them to define the number and type of assessments that would actually be completed. So we hope to have that done for our next committee meeting. We moved on to discussions of harassment, intimidation, bullying. We discussed the statistics from September. We discussed the manpower impact that this new law has put on us. In September, we spent two man months across the district dealing with these issues from the level of the anti-bullying coordinator down through the bullying specialists that are in each of the school buildings. One of the issues that did come up is that this does have an impact on those people being able to do the job that they're actually there for. And there is some concern on the part of the committee that there's a great deal of time being spent reacting to these incidents by the same people who, that if they had this time available to them, could be doing something proactive to keep the incidents from happening possibly. So that's something we're going to continue to follow up with. We've asked Dr. Rocco to prepare numbers for October, and after reviewing those, we will make a recommendation going forward from there. We also discussed, and I'll let Jordan provide the details if anybody has specific questions, but Jordan did represent, did bring this up at a roundtable for superintendents for Somerset County, was it? Dr. Schiff, Somerset County? So there was some discussion at that level as to what the different districts are doing, but if you have questions, I'll leave that to Dr. Schiff to answer on those. We also received a summary on the week of respect of what the different schools' activities, the administration had done at different schools regarding talking to the students about harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We moved on from there to discuss accelerated hiring process. We're talking with the HR groups. We're interested in changing how we go about doing our hiring and the timetable we do that upon. Currently, we do a lot of interviewing early on in the process, but we don't actually offer jobs until much later, until after, typically into the summer after the budgets are set and we've moved on with resignations or anything else. The discussion was around the fact that we could potentially be losing high-quality candidates that we had interviewed early but never made an offer to, and that we should consider making offers to the qualified candidates that we, where we know we have a position. If we've already had paperwork turned in for a retirement, that we know that position's going to be there, and we should go after the quality candidates when we meet them and interview them. There was some discussion about the fact that obviously if we made an offer to somebody in the March or April timeframe, that would have to be contingent upon, you know, the budget passing or impacts from state funding. So that's something we still need to talk about, but we, the committee seemed to feel that that's something that people in this industry in New Jersey are well aware of. So talking to potential candidates about those issues would not be something that would be surprising to them. So the Human Resources Committee unanimously agreed to recommend to the full board that we approve the ability to offer contracts before the budget is finalized and state aid figures have been received. We had a quick discussion on the CAP program. We're currently at 31, soon to be 32 students enrolled, which does put us above the break-even point, and planning has begun for next year. In the area of personnel matters, we did have a discussion about the need to rescind the contract, and that is on tonight's agenda. We also discussed a new payroll specialist job description and the vacancy. This is something that in the past, we've tried to grow people into what we wanted in this position, but at this point, we found somebody who actually is everything that we could possibly want in that role, and that person will be coming up tonight. And lastly, there was a sickback, oh, not lastly, sorry, a sickback request that we were informed of, but at this time, it is still in the hands of the HEA. And we discussed a strategic plan update. We discussed the plan going forward and whether we should try to handle this within the committee or hope still that we might be able to put a retreat together. So at this point, you know, we've looked at goals for Scott, I'm sorry, Dr. Rocco and Dr. Schiff, but we're holding off to see if we can get a board retreat and handle all this as a board. If needed, we would go back to the committee and handle the human resources portions of that in committee. And finally, we reviewed regulations to be proposed for first reading tonight. And that's all from the Human Resources Committee.
All right. Mr. Gillette could not be there, so Mrs. Haley is going to give the operations report.
Thank you, Dr. Paget. We have a very long meeting on October 12th at 7:00 AM. Some of the items that we discussed were the unanticipated state aid. The board had voted to move the use of that funding to the 2012-2013 school year. We tabled the discussion on review, having board members review the bills list. Currently, we do it once a month. There was some discussion that it might be done twice a month, but we decided to table that discussion till the next meeting. We also tabled the renaming of buildings, potential new marquee at the Hillsborough High School. We had our auditors come in to speak about the financial report of, on the district. We are what appears to be in very good, a good financial position. Mr. Mahmood could comment further if he wishes to, but we, looks like we're in a very good position with regard to low debt, so that was also good news. We are roll call, tabling the question that Mrs. Bogatovsky, I believe, actually had entered into discussion for the board on how to do roll call in the future, whether we would continue to go alphabetically or we would switch that up. We've tabled that discussion. Also, the use of facilities and fee structure. It was a very long meeting. I am proud to report and happy to report to the board, though, we did discuss a payroll assistant vacancy position. We had a person leave the district, correct, Mr. Mahmood?
Yes.
And we actually had someone come in that was working with Systems 3000, and we put hiring out for that position. We had somebody apply. This person is actually going to be making a little bit more money than the last person, but the pro is that this person will also be doing our benefits coordination. So it's actually a win-win for everybody as we had voted down that part-time benefits coordinator position. So this candidate will take on both responsibilities, so that was actually what I felt was very positive for the board. We, just give me one moment, I'm sorry. We were presented with a draft of a budget calendar for next year for the board members. I would anticipate that Mr. Mahmood would be handing that out to everyone shortly. That way, we can start to plan for the next few months. We also recommended to review of regulations. These are not policies, they're actually regulations. So they'll be coming to approval for first reading this evening. And we've also tabled until November, the Building on Excellence Report with the strategic plan and the merger. So I think that is it for the committee report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Haas, Education, or, yes?
The Education Committee meeting was held on October 13th at 7:30 AM, and we had a large cast of characters. We had nine administrators there in addition to the four members of our committee. And we discussed what you saw tonight, which was the middle school pilot program for mobile devices, and we're all very excited about that. It's on tonight's agenda at A8, and I hope everybody will support that. I don't think I need to speak any further about that. We also discussed at length the World Language Task Force survey results and recommendation. And although it was on the agenda tonight, we're pulling it till next, our next board meeting on November 14th so that we could have a full discussion with Enrique Pincay representing our task force here to answer all of your questions and give a full presentation about the decision-making process. There have been four meetings of a task force. There were a number of questions at our Education Committee meeting that will be included in the presentation, and we just thought, you know, being big news, we've not had our elementary program, and having the opportunity to re-study it and reinstate it, we want to make sure that the public has a lot of information about it. So we'll be doing that next time. So I would suggest to everybody, stay tuned, it's going to be exciting. And we also discussed no less than six curricula. Two are revisions of mathematics curricula of the TP level and kindergarten level, which is just required by the cycle. And then there are four new curricula. One is for a program exploring journalism, which will take place in grades nine through 12 as an elective. This is something we've been looking to do for a long time. Our technology skills curriculum takes into account basically all of the areas of applied technology and should be an exciting addition to our technology program at the high school. We have a sports injuries program for grade 10 through 12, which is a continuation of a present curriculum for people who want to do more than one semester of that. And it's a really interesting program since we just approved the textbook recently. And, drumroll, we're going to be instituting AP macro and microeconomics, which will be another AP offering. Every time we have surveyed the kids at the high school for what additional AP classes they would like, this came out number one by a mile. And again, it's something that cuts across a lot of areas. It's a good education for the kids to have, and we'll be adding that to our program, hopefully in September of 2012. So the committee obviously unanimously supported that. We didn't quite get to our long-range planning. We met Mrs. Kia Bergman, our new community outreach coordinator, and spoke with her about future plans for her position. And we tabled our strategic plan till the next time. We have a couple of regulations. I think every committee had a couple of regulations. Several regulations are not usually the domain of the board. We set the policy as superintendent develops the regulations. However, there are some that are required by statute to be approved by the Board of Ed, and we had four of them. Administration of Medication Promotion and Retention, Care of School Property, and School District Travel Procedures. So we are forwarding those for tonight's approval. And we also approved Keith Vos, who is a former teacher in our district, to get an hourly contract to screen kids from grade five through seven for the REACH program. So this is not inconsistent with what's happened in the past. So this is not inconsistent with what's happened in the past. This is just this year's approval of that. And that's our exciting Education Committee meeting, so I hope you will support those items that have been brought forward and look forward to sharing with you the World Language Task Force results next month.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. I'll open up to the public if the public has any questions on committee reports. This would be the time. All right, seeing none, is there any questions from the board regarding committee reports? Dr. Rosenberg, and then...
Two things. First of all, I'm really thrilled to see some of the new curricula being put in place. AP courses, the journalism course, revising some older courses. I think this is not only enhancing our program, but I think it's what the parents and the public expect us to do, is to keep raising the bar on the curriculum. So my congratulations to the curriculum people who have put these courses in place, and I'm glad we're offering them. I have one question from Mrs. Haley on the, on her report. It's just for clarification. You said, and it also says in the minutes, that all of the unanticipated state aid will be allocated for expenditures and property tax relief in subsequent years. Now, last week, we voted down the use of some of the state aid money for a position. I understand that. I don't recall if we voted to allocate all of the money for future expenditures, or whether it's even our purview. I'm a little, I'm a little confused. I don't have a problem with it, I'm just trying to figure out where it came from.
May I clarify, if you don't mind?
Yes.
The, what the board voted on is that we cannot use the unanticipated state aid during this current budget year. But the board will have to dispose and make decisions about how to either expend or give those monies back in terms of tax relief in next year or the year after that. So the board's decision to not make allocations out of unanticipated state aid was for this year.
All right. And having done that, all of the positions and expenditures to date have come out of other resources and we're fully covered. All right, thank you.
Mr. Gillette.
Yeah. I just wanted to say that to follow up on something Mr. Pulsofer said in his report, that, I'm sorry. Despite the reconfiguration of the committees, the board and the board president always has the ability to form ad hoc committees for specific purposes. And I'm not sure if negotiations doesn't somehow fall into that category. We're down to, well, certainly not an ongoing function. We're down to two bargaining units now, so there'd be some years where no negotiation may take place at all. And I, and I understand where Mr. Pulsofer was going. The premise of his statements was that if we go back to a different committee structure in January, if we abandon this structure, he'd like to stay with that. But I, I think regardless, even if we stay with the current structure, might we not want to choose an ad hoc committee of three members plus the board president now, not necessarily the three members that are on the HR committee now? I don't think that's something we even thought about yet, but it's, I think it's something we could think about. I think, you know, H, we heard his report, HR has a lot going on, so I just think that could be out there for maybe for Dr. Paget to, you know, to think about. I don't think negotiations have actually started yet, so maybe something we could think about. And so that way, we'd have the ad, ad hoc committee, whether we go forward with this structure after January, a different structure, we could still just keep for the specific purpose of those negotiations. Then next year, a different time, another negotiations comes up, have another three on there. Just, just an idea.
I hear you. All right, Mr. Pulsofer.
I'd actually like to go back to Dr. Rosenberg's question. I'm confused as to when we actually voted to say we would not spend any of the unanticipated aid this year. My understanding was that what we voted on last week was that for that particular position, which we, the proposal on the table for that position was to fund it for, from the unanticipated state aid, and that, that particular vote failed. But I don't remember there being a specific vote that said we won't, that implied that we would not spend any money. Can, can you explain the, where's, where's the, is it a timeline issue, or?
So we had to make a decision by October fifteenth, I believe that was the date. And at the previous meeting, when the decision was made not to use it on the one position, we, at that same meeting, we put forward a resolution that said that this is what we're doing with the money. And we had to send that to the Executive County Superintendent, and so we had to make the decision by October fifteenth.
I guess I'll have to review the minutes. I don't remember anything to the effect that we aren't spending any. All I remembered was the, that a, that a single position that was presented as being funded that way, that that vote had failed. But I don't, I don't recall it this time, that we had a separate item to say we would. So in effect, by default, we kind of ended there because of the timeline anyway.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. That we had to make a decision by October fifteenth. And at that time, none of the money was spent, so it goes into the next budget.
Current budget.
In the current budget.
Right.
Goes into the next budget.
Mr. Gillette.
Yeah, like you just maybe jogged your memory. That was the vote that we needed two-thirds. We need actually six votes to pass by state reg. So that was, that was that one, and it came out to be a four-four tie. Therefore, that, so if that makes...
Oh, no, that was the vote about the position. I remember that a hundred percent. What I don't remember is a separate agenda item to say, we now agree that we're not spending any. Maybe I just don't remember. I specifically remember the vote you're talking about, but that vote was about specifically saying, we want to fund this position with unanticipated state aid, and to spend that had to be six votes, and that failed. I remember that. But that vote, if I remember correctly, was about the specific position and not the whole...
You're, you're actually correct. So I checked with Mr. Mahmood. There was no...
He was surprised.
Vote. No, 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 no. No, there was no vote, but because we didn't expend any of the money and the deadline was the fifteenth, it then, by default, you're right.
So it was a default into not spending this year.
Thank you. All right.
Any other questions about committee reports? Mrs. Haas.
I have some concern about some of the HR regulations not being consistent with our policy. Reading through some of the regulations, and I didn't put them side by side, but for example, the evaluation of the superintendent regulation basically gives the Human Resources Committee the entire responsibility for evaluating the superintendent. That's contrary to policy. Our policy says the entire Board of Education does that, and historically, we have done that where everybody on the board contributes their input. Basically, the regulation states, you know, we'll gather data, you know, the Human Resources Committee will gather data, and that's fine, and, you know, we'll, you know, get the stuff together. But historically, we have had every member of the board involved with that. And the regulations regarding evaluation of tenured and untenured teachers and administrators should also not only be consistent with our policy, which I think they are, but they should also take into account the negotiated contracts that we have with those bargaining groups. And I'm not sure that that is in fact correct, but I don't have a copy of the new contract, so I would not be able to compare them side by side. I have no problem if you want to go ahead, you know, and move them forward, but I would like somebody to look at that and make sure that we're not, you know, supporting something that we don't mean to support. I also have a question on the quote-unquote "two-man" months, which I would prefer to be "two-people" months, since probably most of the people involved are women, spent on HIV analysis. I mean, we've gone through a lot of these, and very few of them turn out to be HIV. How much of this would be happening anyway? How much of this, I mean, because there are new regulations requiring certain paper trail, but that doesn't really demonstrate to me that this is all additional time. I mean, if kids are having issues with each other, they would still have to be dealt with in terms of, you know, guidance counselor involvement, teacher involvement, administrator involvement, and all of the above. So I wasn't quite sure when I saw that chart about, you know, two-people months spent on that, whether or not that's truly a net addition, or if it's, you know, just how much time we spend on discipline.
Mr. Rocco, can you speak to that, please?
I can speak a little bit to that because we're still collecting the data. It is new, and the discussion right now is, is it new and is it resulting in more investigations than typical? Some of these incidents that I brought up to you in closed session are ones that would be investigated. They would be involving the vice principals. What you have now is you have a process by law in which there's actually a HIB specialist who's doing part of the investigation, required to do the investigation, which then the vice principals in some buildings, principals in other buildings, get involved in the process also. There's, there are timelines that need to be met, there are specific criteria that have to be met. So when it comes to the investigation, it's much more complex than has been done before because you have to determine when that term is used, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, does it meet the standard that's set in the law? And if so, how does it meet it? And a lot of times, that involves some, some complex discussion, meetings, discussion with students involving administration and the specialists, central office administration and the principals. So there's a lot more conversation happening related to each event that is brought forward as a potential HIB event. So the individuals who are doing the investigations at the buildings, those who have been assigned as the anti-bullying specialists in the building, are spending a tremendous amount of time outside of their normal work duties, and we are documenting that at this point.
So what you're documenting is everything above and beyond what they would be doing had this legislation never gone through?
They are doing, they are absolutely doing stuff above and beyond what they typically would be doing because in the past, they've never described their time being associated predominantly by investigating such incidents or alleged incidents. They are, I'll give you an example.
But that's a good thing.
In the past or now?
Now.
But they're not...
It's an improvement on the ability to deal with disciplinary problems.
The individuals that are dealing with these situations are typically not the ones who are responsible for the discipline. Remember, that we have to assign somebody else to do the investigation, and they are typically, the individuals that are doing this are not administrators.
But they're guidance counselors.
Guidance counselors.
And they would, they would be typically providing guidance to the kids who are involved in these incidents.
Correct. At the elementary level, guidance program requires them to do three elements. One is teaching class, two is run groups, and three is to deal with crisis situations. Currently, right now, they are having a challenge doing any one of those three outside of HIB in many of the buildings they're reporting. And similar situations are being reported at some of the upper buildings related to some of the investigations going on.
Okay, do you expect that to settle down?
We're going to collect the data and we're going to find out. Is it, is it a, is it a situation with the initial? We'll see. Possibly. And there's a lot of effort being made to be consistent across the district. Make sure that we are addressing these issues appropriately in a timeframe that meets it, and, and we're doing that. And we're making sure that we implement the law the way and the policy the way it was written to make sure that we create a safe environment for every child in this district.
I'm, I'm asking because I'm, I'm getting the impression that other districts aren't quite doing what we're doing. I think everybody's doing their own thing to, from, from the most minimal involvement to, you know, very high level, and I'm sort of wondering where we are on the spectrum of our involvement here.
Yeah, that, that's a real frustration of ours, that there isn't a consistent implementation across the 600 districts in the state of New Jersey. I think you hit it right on the head, that everyone is interpreting it in a way that they feel is consistent with the law. We have developed our, our process based upon the best legal advice that we, that we have, which is our legal counsel, who would be responsible for defending the board if there was, if there was a suit against the board. So we need to follow, in, in my judgment, the best counsel that, our best legal counsel in this, in this situation. That being said, though, there are, different districts are doing it differently. And I think it's unfortunate that we're not getting clear direction from the Department of Education with forms, expectations, and whatnot. We have asked, they are not willing to give that information at this point. Yes, Mr. Rocco.
And Mrs. Haas, as you know from discussions that we're having here now, the district and those assigned to these responsibilities take those responsibilities very seriously. We, we want to make sure that we do create that safe environment, and even if right now those numbers are adding up to two and a half people months as we go through here, and maybe it will diminish as we go along, eventually, we want to get to the point where we're very proactive with this, and we're teaching our students and the community, working with the community, to make sure that we're creating those positive environments. So we're making, we're making every effort to make this policy one in which everybody understands and that everybody will have a safer environment for. That may mean more time initially, but we don't know if that's going to stay this way or diminish over a period of time, and we'll see.
Yeah. Well, some, some school districts have had like large assembly programs, you know, in the way of, you know, proactive stuff.
And some of our schools are doing some of those activities, and I'll use the middle school as an example, that they had a night for parents to come out, and they have done a number of things where the specialist has gone to every class and talked to every student. We'd like to get to that point, and what we need to determine is what support do we need to do that? Because we feel that this law is important, and we want to follow it, and we want to make sure that we do it right for our students. So that may entail some recommendation later on down the road, that we need some assistance in getting to that point to be able to do that for everybody across the district.
Good. Let's see how it goes.
Thank you. Mr. Pulsofer.
I would just like to say that, you know, when we looked at those numbers, it was not, not entirely in the case of saying this is purely outside of what they would normally do, but that, just a concern that this two-people month, I do stand corrected there, that this two-people month is, that amount of time could have otherwise been spent by those same people, or maybe by a shift in responsibilities, in doing something that would be proactive to prevent the situations from occurring, you know? And that's our concern, is the, the man, sorry, the people power cost to reacting and documenting and investigating after the fact instead of using those same resources to improve the environment so that these things don't even occur in the first place.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes, I'd like to go over, in B1 for tonight, we're going to approve a regulation, the evaluation of tenured administrators. And I have it open on my screen. There's a, the question I have is, I kept scrolling, looking through it to see if, in the case of, it looks like the evaluator and people who are going to review the administrator is just from the top down, and, and I didn't see where, if an administrator had a high percentage of, let's say, dissatisfaction, or how, how, what kind of avenue would their staff be able to bring up issues and, and help that administrator to improve upon their work?
Is this like a 360 sort of?
Yeah, either a 360, or like, I've been, I have been monitoring the progress in evaluations and some, some ideas that they have in New Jersey. So like, there are such things as peer review, or let's say, staffing review, but when I went through this first reading, it, it has something like this. Maintenance of administrative job evaluation criteria will be the responsibility of the Assistant Superintendent of Personnel or, and on the request of a single job holder. So in other words, that administrator can, if I understand, that administrator can ask for a change in the criteria, but what about the people that report to that administrator or?
Yeah, we, we actually had some of the same discussion about whether or not we should even have any of the administrator or teacher evaluation regulations on the agenda because we're going through a teacher and administrator revision process for next year. However, this is a compliance issue. We, we're going to go through our CUSAC monitoring process, and there is a requirement for, for the board to approve certain regulations. This may change as a result of, of our discussions and the committee work that Mr. Rocco is going to be chairing in the district, but as far as what's current practice, we need the, the board to approve basically what is current practice. And going back to what Judy said, if it is inconsistent with policy, that... And going back to what Judy said, if it is inconsistent with policy, that policy will drive the regulations, not, not vice versa. So our current practice is not a peer review. We don't have those type of 360 evaluative practices currently in place. We need regulations that reflect what's current practice. And then we will be doing a lot of work in the area of teacher and administrator evaluations. This year, it's one of our main goals that we're going to be working on, and, and we anticipate changes. There'll be changes, and, and I think it'll be for the better. Reflective of research and good practices that we know from our profession and from the private sector.
Okay.
Okay.
So for now, we just have to approve of this because it fits with the current policy?
Fits with the current practice, yes.
Okay.
All right, seeing no further comments, we're going to move on to, I believe, new business. Is that correct? If there's any new business from the public at this time, you can speak to the board, and we can either answer your question or refer to a committee or the administration. Name and address, please.
Andy Singler, Six Poppy Drive. I'd just like to request in future discussions, especially now that we're going to be moving into the budget season, or for any other discussions that come up about financials, I'm very interested in understanding better what the impact is on the individual household and the individual taxpayer. We've gone through a number of prior budget cycles where we've spent a long time debating things, what would, that would boil down to perhaps the price of a cup of coffee in, in the returns to the public. And I, so I'd like to have the, the amount of money that we're talking about be put in better perspective. For example, just recently, we talked about whether about $400, $412,000, $412,000, $100,000 should go back to the public. And it really boiled down to my calculation to something that was less than maybe the price of a dinner for two or whatever. So I was hoping that if we could get a count of the number of households that pay taxes in the district, or if anytime we're talking about giving a break to the taxpayer, we can put that in more relative terms to how much they would actually receive annually. I think it would help in the decision-making process because there's a trade-off there with what the benefit is to the school district, particularly when taxpayers come up and voice their opinion that they do want a reduction in taxes. I can't help but think of the commercial that's been on TV in the past where the little girl is anticipating being given a real pony, and she's given a little plastic toy pony instead, just in relative terms. A lot of the dollars that I think we're talking about have phenomenal impacts on the school district and what the children's need. You know, the money might not help a family in need because of this economy, but it would definitely help the child of that family in need have the resources that they need to be able to work through it. So I'd just like the board to consider that for future meetings, especially when we start talking about the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other new business from the, the public? All right, seeing none. Is there any new business from the board? Any new business from the board? All right, seeing none. We're going to move on to the action agenda. First of all, if there's any comment on the action agenda from the public, they can do so at this time. I'm going to let the board comment during the action agenda. All right, seeing none. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. In the area of education, I'm recommending that the board approve the following education agenda items, the professional travel-related expenses, the curriculum that were listed as part of Mrs. Haas's report from the Education Committee, the approval of an out-of-district placement, the approval of the regulations for first reading, a recognition, a proclamation to recognize Red Ribbon Week, motion to approve the science curriculum writing, and approve the student screening, reach screening that was mentioned during the, the Education Committee report, as well as implementation of the middle school touchscreen mobile device pilot that we had a presentation at, at the beginning of this meeting. And, and again, we have A9 on the agenda, which is the World Language Task Force Implementation Plan that Mrs. Haas is suggesting that we table and move to our next meeting, at which time we'll have a presentation from members of the task force.
Before I take the motion, and I don't know if it's a requirement or just tradition, but usually I read the Red Ribbon Week proclamation. So get ready for the whereas. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to reduce the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership and the District Life Skills Committee are sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyle, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st, 2011, and whereas President Barack Obama and Mrs. Michelle Obama are the national honorary chair people to provide this national focus on drug-free America, and whereas business, government, law enforcement, schools, religious institutions, service organizations, youth, physicians, senior citizens, military, sports teams, and individuals will demonstrate their commitment to a drug-free, healthy lifestyle by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas the education community of Hillsborough further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Hillsborough Township Board of Education does hereby support October 23rd through 31st, 2011 as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages its students and employees to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Be it further resolved that the Hillsborough Township Board of Education encourages students and employees to pledge, it's up to me to be drug-free. All right, so A1 through eight, I need a motion.
So moved.
Or, I'm sorry, the new tradition. Mrs. Haas, would you like to move A1 through A8?
I would so love to move that.
Thank you, and I'll take a second. Second. All right. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Mahmoud.
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Padgett?
Yes.
I would just like to congratulate our folks from the middle school who did a wonderful job presenting and received unanimous support from the Board of Education. Congratulations. Our next area is human resources, and I ask that the board approve the following agenda items, approve the regulations as reported out from committee, approve termination of employee, approve the leaves of absence as listed, and revise leaves of absence, as well as revise long-term substitutes. We have a rescinding of a contract, as well as approving the appointments of our new transportation supervisor, payroll specialist, and coach. Approve the appointments of home instructors and substitutes. We have a, and we also have a group change.
All right. Mr. Pulsifer, will you make that motion?
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, be it so moved.
And you'll take a second? All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Mahmoud.
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Padgett?
Yes.
And finally, under the area of operations, I recommend that the board approve the following motions, the monthly financials, the bills list, line item transfers, participation in CJ Pride Consortium, motion to accept the CAFER, which is our annual audit. I would like to note for the board as well as the public that we received no recommendations. We have a clean audit, and congratulations to Mr. Mahmoud and his team. Also, to approve the regulations as, as itemized from the committee report, and awarding of transportation routes, and approving a donation of interactive musical mats for Triangle School.
For Mrs. Weitzel. Mrs. Haley, would you like to move the operations agenda?
Thank you, Dr. Padgett. Yes, it is my pleasure to recommend, or say, move the action items under operations.
Thank you, and I'll take a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? I'll just say once again, thank you to Mrs. Weitzel for the donation of the interactive musical mat. Seeing no further discussion, roll call, Mr. Mahmoud.
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Padgett?
Yes.
Just no more items on the action agenda. We do have informational items of the monthly suspension list.
All right, we're on to old business. If there's any old business from the public, they can bring this up at this time. All right, seeing none. Is there any old business from the board? Mrs. Haley?
I just wanted to get an update from Dr. Schiff on whether or not we actually have investigated potentially outsourcing our graduation next year.
Outsourcing?
I remember I had brought it up. Sorry. Bad word. My apologies.
No, that's all right. I've had a, a conversation with Ms. Bingert about whether or not we should explore either a temporary air conditioning system that could temporarily cool the, the gym down if we need to bring in, in people, as you recall. And anyone who was there could certainly recall, it was stifling hot, actually resulting in
Dangerously.
in a few people that needed to be treated for, for heat exhaustion. There isn't a, there, there isn't a place that's close to, to our facility that would, that would allow for ease of, ease of access for parents and other people that would come to, come to the gym or come to graduation there. And other, the RAC, which is the Rutgers Athletic Center, would be large enough, but that is, that's a significant expense. If the board wishes, and maybe this could be an agenda item for operations, if it's something that we wish to take a look at, we could certainly explore it in greater detail there. It really just depends on, on how much inconvenience we want our community to travel to a larger location, or how much expense we wish the board to have in terms of temporarily air conditioning. It was really, it, it wasn't good. And we, we shouldn't be putting a lot of people in a space where we're actually going to have to be treating people for, for too much heat, and, and hopefully, we can, we can find some solution for that, and Mother Nature could, could cooperate with us.
I mean, obviously, it's not my intention to go out and, you know, spend extra money. I, I just want to try to ensure that we have a, a better graduation for, you know, all the citizens and the parents and the families that take the time. And I know that I believe even Dr. Rosenberg was, was one who suggested potentially, you know, piping the graduation into the auditorium so that we could
Remote broadcast.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, just because it is a disappointment to so many people who have family that travels from far away. And then, yes, again, for us, you know, that were in attendance and watching people being taken away out on stretchers was, you know, not very comforting either, so.
Nope.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, I wasn't going to mention this, but since Mrs. Haley mentioned the graduation, I just want to say that I tuned in Sunday to see my favorite TV show on Channel 14, which is this show here that we put on twice a month. And once again, I saw the graduation. This is not the, the only time recently when I've tuned in to see a board meeting, and we're still showing the graduation. And once the summer is over, I, you know, I don't think we should show the graduation anymore because I know people do, you know, my son's basketball coach, for one, you know, he says he watches on TV, and then when he, when he misses it, he gets upset. So people, people kind of like, there are some people that like to see it, so I'm not sure who controls it or who's deciding that we should still play the graduation when we should be playing the current board meetings. So if someone could look into that, that'd be great.
And then for the, the sort of venue options for graduation, can we have the operations committee look at that?
Yeah, that'd be all right.
I think people would agree. Yes? Okay.
Old or new?
What?
Business or old business?
This is old business. All right. All right, seeing no further old business, I need a motion to adjourn.
No new business?
We did that a while ago.
You missed it.
Were you sleeping?
All right, wait, wait, wait. What would you like?
Do you over?
Go, go ahead, go ahead. I'm, I'm flexible.
Just real quick, I wanted to take this time to congratulate the Hillsborough Marching Band for their third-place finish at the Amacau Cup at MetLife Stadium. Next week, the band will be competing in Bands of America Regional Championships, and I invite on
What's the date, the?
29th. Invite the entire community to the Hillsborough High School Band Festival, 25 bands. It's a great event. Get there early. Every single seat in the stadium will be taken, and I hope to see a, a large turnout. Thank you.
And you get to see me work it, so there's that, too. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I hosed and abstentions. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.